Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call an order in the Monday, June 20th, 2011. Currytuck County Commissioners Meeting to order. At 6:30, we had a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting. I guess the good news is, we didn't have any cases that come for us, so... Now, we'll start with the implication. We have with us tonight Reverend Dan Burge of the New Live Church. Would ask everyone to please stand, and Mr. Burge, if you can, please use some prayer, and please believe.
He's stopped here. Reverend Burge's not here.
He's not?
Mr. Petrie, if you want to use some prayer. Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come tonight as members of the Board of County Commissioners and citizens to do the business of Currytuck County. We ask you to bestow your blessings and mercy and grace upon us as we make decisions that will affect each and every one of us in our county. Be with us as we do this. All these blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. We have three changes tonight. I'd like to add to the consent agenda... It's on. I'd like to add to the consent agenda, Notts Island Volunteer Fire Department request for $25,000 to purchase lights for a storage building. They have the money on hand in their budget. Also, would like to move item four to item three, and then make item three will then become item four. Have a motion.
Show them a...
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. We have two people signed up. This is generally a time when items that are not appearing on the regular agenda can be discussed, and would ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. When I call your name, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Earl White. My name's Earl White. I live at 108 South Marshall Road in Shawboro. Been a resident down here for going on 18 years. My concern is about the local government as far as the health problems that we have in Walnut Island. About four and a half years ago, the campus section in Walnut Island had problems with its sewer section. Mr. Scanlon came down and talked with the property owners. We were told that if we didn't renew our sewer system, the camper and homes would be condemned. He also told us that there were some grants that we could apply for. We hired an engineer and an attorney to draw up the plans and proceed to look into the grants. To qualify for the grants, we had to match the money for the two grants that we received. The grants were for $500,000 each. The property owners were assessed a total of $4,500 each. We are coming to completion of the new sewer system this month. The property owners in Walnut Island complied and did everything that was asked of them. We have a problem down there now with someone throwing feces and urine in the canals. Young kids swim and fish in these canals. We have talked with the local government, and the answer is always, we can't do anything about this problem. I didn't understand why this problem cannot be addressed. This is an unhealthy issue and cannot continue to go on. The healthy problem of someone in our county government needs to address this problem.
Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Williams.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Williams. I'm a property owner at 114 Bassett Drive, and I've been a property owner in Walnut Island for approximately three years. And I understand approximately four years ago, Currytuck County officials told Walnut Island residents that if we didn't bring our sewer system up to code Walnut Island, homes and campers would be condemned. We applied for and were successful in receiving grants totaling $1 million, raised $800,000 in personal funds, and we are now at completion. Various residents have come to the county asking for assistance... Excuse me. On several occasions since November 2010, asking for help with other residents dumping human waste, feces and urine in the canal. We've been told that there isn't anything they can do. I don't understand how the county, once willing to condemn Walnut Island, isn't able to assist with a public health issue, and how we are not receiving cooperation from the county. This is a health concern for residents in Walnut Island, southern shores, Duck, Corolla, Nag's Head, et cetera, as the water doesn't stay in the Walnut Island sound in canals. Who will be responsible if we have an ECO outbreak in this area? And how long before some action would be taken on this issue? Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
This is a real concern. I mean, the... It is illegal to dump into the waterways and to have illegal sewage being piped into those canals. I mean, we're not living in the 20s or the 18th century, whatever. I mean, we're in the 21st century. I mean, that's illegal and it needs to be stopped. Mr. Scanlon, is that not illegal to dump raw sewage into a waterway?
Yes, sir, it is. The District Health Department has been notified of this. I'm aware that they've gone and done at least one specific site inspection, and they did not find... Or the report that came back, they did not find any illegal activity occurring at that site. If these folks have a specific address or can identify someone who's actually doing this, it is illegal. It's a public health issue, and we will make sure the public health officials are aware of this. And again, we'll get them to go back out on site.
And so, if people have knowledge of someone literally dumping into those canals, they can call the county, and they can...
Well, they would need to call the District Health Department. That's the authority who would be to regulate this, and they would need to be able to document or substantiate the occurrence of someone doing this, and be able to present that to the Public Health Department, and they'll proceed with appropriate action.
And just the Public Health Department?
Yes, sir.
You mean to tell me that... Now, if you throw something off your boat, and Wildlife Officer sees you, he's going to cite you for littering. Now, if you throw something off out of your automobile on the highways, you're going to be stopped by a sheriff's deputy or a state patrolman, and they're going to cite you. Why can't they cite those individuals when they go down and look and see what is flowing from their property into the waterways? That makes no sense to me.
It's... I'm not understanding that it's flowing from the properties. They're being accused of throwing it into the canal.
Throwing it?
Throwing it. Yes, sir. So, it's not an issue of there's an illegal pipe flowing into the canal. At least the complaint has come to me, is there's accusations that people are... By some other conveyance, whether it's a bucket or whatever, is throwing this material into the canal. And so, part of the issue is, in order to be cited, that there would be... You need to be able to substantiate and document that that individual did in fact do this. We had a complaint several months ago. The Health Department was contacted. They went down to the site. They were not able to document what they felt like was necessary to bring action against any particular individual. But my understanding, unless there's something being different said here, it's not a piping issue. It's people literally throwing and disposing of this material illegally and improperly into the waterways.
Is that's what is happening?
That's what's happening, but to answer Mr. Scanlon's question, and we did give them two addresses.
Please come by, please. My friend, please. Thank you.
To answer the question here, WISD, the chairperson, came down here and gave them two addresses that we know of that have no water, no sewage in the house, and they're still living in the house, and they have been living in the house.
Just because you do not have a connection to a centralized wastewater is not in and of itself reasons to evict the folks. There's other means of appropriate and approved disposal of waste. Dumping in the canal is not one of them. We were given the addresses. We turned those over to the District Health Department. They went out there on site, and again, they were not able to, with their site visits, to substantiate that there was anything illegal occurring at that site. But just because they are not connected to an approved central wastewater system in and of itself does not mean that there's a violation at the residence.
So, it's up to the citizens to get your camcorders out so that you can have the evidence to present?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for clearing that up.
Mr. Petrie, do you have a comment?
Um, I'll pass. Thank you.
I had one comment I'd like... Actually, a little adification. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. Unfortunately, none of it's moving along as quickly as we would like. Perhaps Mr. McCree or Mr. Scanlon might want to address some of the machinations happening regarding getting Walnut Island hooked up hopefully to the wastewater system over to Waterside Villages. And as I said, we're working on it, but I think Mr. McCree's in the process of that now.
Well, I can say, of course, Walnut Island Sanitary District filed an eminent domain action to take the wastewater treatment plant from Wakovia, which currently owns much of Waterside Villages, including the wastewater system. As part of that lawsuit, they have reached a settlement agreement, so the county is informed, by which Wakovia is willing to convey the wastewater treatment plant to the county. But from my understanding from part of that settlement agreement, the wastewater treatment plant at Waterside Villages is required to begin to accept the wastewater from Walnut Island Sanitary District. There's also some discussion about the conveyance of four acres or so of land that Walnut Island Sanitary District owns, which is located within Waterside Village's development. But that's an issue that's still being worked through to see whether we're going to reach a point that the county will actually end up having the wastewater treatment plant. If the county doesn't take it, then Walnut Island Sanitary District will end up owning and operating that wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have any idea what the time process is?
I have received documents from Wakovia that I have gone through, and now I need to call the Wakovia's attorney to talk about some modifications. I would want to see at least on the county side if the county is going to be willing to ultimately accept this wastewater treatment plant, and then maybe that will resolve the litigation between Wakovia and Wanted Island. I do not know the current state of the Wanted Island collection system, which was being replaced. That's what's called some persons to be disconnected from the collection system in Walnut Island, and calls, we've heard, in this instance, someone maybe used a bucket to throw their waste into a canal. But that's an issue between Walnut Island Sanitary District and those individuals who have not been able, or they're unwilling to pay a connection fee or their assessment for connection to the central collection system down there.
And reiterating that, the county really has no jurisdiction over that. That's between the sanitary district and the district.
Which is a separate independent political body of the state of North Carolina, much like the county or a town.
Do you think we could get this resolved with Wakovia within 30 days?
I think we may be get to a point within 30 days where we might have documents and a proposal to present to this board to decide if you want to accept the plan. It's going to be incumbent also upon Wanted Island Sanitary District to agree to that as a party to that litigation with Wakovia.
Are they in the loop?
My understanding is they are in the loop. I'm not sure to what extent Wakovia's had the discussion or has shared the documents with them.
And it's my understanding that it's actually the customers that were disconnected by the Walnut Island Sanitary District for either being unwilling or unable to pay the assessments that are probably the persons being cited in these particular instances.
That's correct. I will comment that I don't think 30 days is the timeframe that Wakovia is working under.
They've been... We've been doing this, but I think we built that sewer plan in 2005.
We've been talking about this probably for two years with Wakovia about what the county might be willing to do to try to assist the situation, and frankly, I don't think we're any closer.
I attended the meeting for the homeowners association back in the fall, and there were some citations made by the sanitation district. I think you were at that meeting also. And I want to thank you all for bringing that back to our attention because it is something that we need to look at, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? So, we have signed up for the public comment periods. Anyone else in the audience who would like to have a public comment period? If not, I'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item number three. Public hearing and action on the Whalehead Service District for solid waste collection and disposal. Mr. Woody, I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Woody to start, I guess, or Mr. McCree.
I'd be glad to give some background, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Chairman, as you recall, in January of this year, you and the county manager and I met with some citizens from Whalehead subdivision in Corolla during which they expressed concern with regard to some solid waste collection or disposal issues. Among those concerns were garbage cans that were left remaining on the streets for lengthy periods of time and not being rolled back underneath houses, which was causing some problems, not only with the possibility or the occurrence of solid waste being dumped out of cans and spread perhaps along the streets, but also causing some concern with regard interference between motor vehicle traffic and pedestrians, particularly on some of those narrow streets in Whalehead subdivision. Another concern, as I recall, was raised at the time, was also perhaps bulk waste that was being pulled out of houses before, at the end of seasons, and perhaps not being picked up in a timely manner, also causing the community to be unattractive unsightly without the proper disposal of that waste. It was then in April that Wanted Island... Well, I'm sorry. Whalehead Attorney John Morrison came to meet with me and Mr. Woody to again present the request that the county consider the creation of a service district for solid waste collection and disposal to immediately start addressing these two particular issues. And at the board's direction, then staff undertook the process necessary to get this on for public hearing tonight in order for you, if you decide to create the sanitary... the service district, to have it in effect this coming new fiscal year, July 1. The process we have followed is required by the general statutes, which necessitated that a first-class mailing, public notice of this hearing, be sent to each property owner as listed by the Currytuck County Tax Department four weeks prior to tonight. That was done. Secondly, a report had to be prepared and filed with Clerk to the Board of Commissioners four weeks prior to tonight's hearing. That also was completed. This matter is now before you for public hearing to make a determination as to whether the service district should be created. I would note that it's important for you to remember that as you make your determination as to whether this district should be created, the statute requires that you find that there is a demonstrable need for providing in the district the service that's being requested. It's impossible or impracticable to provide the service countywide. It is economically feasible to provide the service within the proposed district without the unreasonable or burdensome levy of a tax, and there's a demonstrable demand for the proposed district by persons residing in the district. As we had presented to you, and has been presented in the report and the notice of public hearing, there would be proposed to provide for the initial services, as has been indicated, a tax levy of 1.5 cents, one and a half cents per $100 of assessed valuation within the district for the coming fiscal year, should you decide to create the service district. The Board of Commissioners, as you recall, also was concerned that adhere from as many people as it could who own property within Whalehead subdivision, and make sure that there was indeed a demonstrable need being expressed by property owners within the subdivision. And so, one technique, in addition to people sending letters, emails, and I guess communicating with each of you commissioners, perhaps individually, we put a survey tool on the county website approximately three weeks or so ago. And Mr. Woody, I'm going to turn it over to him to present to you the two questions as asked by the Board of Commissioners, that we try to get some idea of the feeling of Whalehead subdivision property owners regarding the issue of creation of this service district and the possible imposition of a one and a half cent tax levy. And in addition, as you know, there is a existing Whalehead service district for drainage... stormwater drainage purposes, where it is proposed that the tax be increased for the coming fiscal year from four cents to five cents. So, that question was also placed on the website for property owners to be able to respond with regard to their feelings on those two issues. This is not a referendum by any means. It wasn't scientific. It was just a tool trying to allow, again, an opportunity for property owners to express their views to the Board of Commissioners. So, Mr. Woody?
And I'll be brief on the question of the levy of a tax of 1.5 cents per $100 for the solid waste collection and disposal. There's two pie charts on your screen that you can see, and it was basically yes, no question. And again, it's not scientific results, it don't... It's a more of a subjective-type poll. We tried to go in and make sure that the response is legitimate, but the first pie chart you see were the percentages, 67% in support and 33% against the service district. And that's the raw data. We had more than 300 responses. What we did, though, after we looked at the raw data, we went in and we removed any duplicate responses from one property. So, for example, if a single property had a husband and a wife vote, we just kept one response. Didn't let one property vote twice. Also, through the IT department, we were able to identify some responses that were fraudulent or weren't... We weren't able to keep because they were not submitted correctly. We excluded those, and when the data was pared down to actual legitimate responses, we had a result of 83% in favor and 17% against. So, again, we showed you the raw data and what we feel is a more accurate portrayal of the tally amounts. As for the solid waste service district, for the increase in the tax for the Whalehead Service District for stormwater improvements, you see a similar type of scenario, 73% in favor of that tax increase for stormwater improvements, 27% against. That's the raw data. Again, more than 300 responses. After we went through and removed what we believe to be fraudulent or duplicate responses, the results were 80% in favor and 20% against.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scanlon, I know we've discussed this numerous times, but from the stormwater piece of it, what improvements are going to be made with this additional tax? If you would like, from Mr. Weatherly to come up and address it, be fine.
It'd probably be more appropriate if the county engineer came up and spoke to that.
Mr. Weatherly, would you please come up, sir? Just to ensure everyone knows what we're talking about.
Thanks, sir. Eric Weatherly, county engineer. We have funds to build the first phase, which has been built, and the second phase, which is Barracuda. The third phase, which we're asking for, would be Herring Street and Mackerel Street. And then that would connect Phase One and Phase Three. So, that's the extent of it. Any other questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Herring and Mackerel.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there any questions from anyone, from Mr. Woody or Mr. McCree? If not, I think the Whalehead Property Owners Association's being represented by Attorney Morrison. I'll give you your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. How much time are you allotting me, sir?
Whatever you need.
All right. Well, hopefully it won't be very much. I would request the right for a brief rebuttal if that becomes necessary. Ike, as is his custom, did an excellent job of describing the statutory requirements. Let me fill you in a little bit here, and let's go through those. Things you should consider is the residential or seasonal population, the population density. There are only about 50 folks, and I believe this is in your material, that live in the Whalehead District full-time. The significance of that is you've got absentee landlords. Obviously, most of this property is investment property, rental property, and the folks are not there to take care of it on a day-to-day basis. Additionally, the value of the property is in its rental capacity. You should also take into account the appraised value of the property. Well, it's quite high. It's Corolla. It's Pinehurst on the beach. I mean, it's a gorgeous place. The present tax rate of the county, I believe I saw in the paper the other day, we are the sixth lowest out of approximately 600 local governments. The ability of the district to sustain the additional tax burden. If the average highest was $700,000, and I think there are quite a few in there that would be more than that, but if you took $700,000 as the value, the additional tax for this tax, for the service district, would be $105 a year, which is quite modest in the scheme of things. The probable net revenues of the project to be financed and the extent to which the services will be self-supporting. I submit to you, based on the work my clients have done with a private contractor, which they've already lined up and is ready to go, there will be no burden on the county, and it is built in that services will increase as time goes on. There is a surplus of money so that they won't have to come back to you to ask for an increase. Okay? I think this will generate... Bob, I believe it's going to generate about $140,000 a year, and the actual contracting service will be how much? Okay. So, it's... There's quite a buffer here. The probable... Excuse me. Then, are there any other matters that you might want to discuss? And if you do, please bring those to my attention. Now, as to the matters that Ike raised that are also statutorily required that you must find, because it's discretionary with you as to whether to do this or not, but if you do it, you must find there's a demonstrable need. Well, I think you perhaps have seen photographs, and we've got folks here that can talk about it, but there's trash all over the place. And please consider this. The Whalehead Property Owners Association is a voluntary organization. There is not a mandatory homeowner's association. The import of that is that they cannot, without the assistance of the government, impose a levy or a fee or an assessment on their membership. So, that's why they're here with you. And comparable subdivisions that do have a mandatory homeowner's association, they charge $4,000 or so dollars a year for this kind of thing. So, this is quite the deal. It is next impossible and practical to provide these services on a countywide basis. Well, obviously, the county, as sovereign as you are, you can't afford to do this all up and down the mainland, and you've got this specific, unique need, which, by the way, is the whole purpose of service districts. If there is a pocket of the county because of its unique geography, because of the use the property is being put to, because of some special demands that has a requirement that other parts of the county do not, it would be unfair to burden the entire county so that the smaller geographical area could meet its needs. It's economically feasible to provide the proposed services without unreasonable or burdensome tax levies. $105 on a $700,000 property would certainly meet that. And there is a demonstrable demand for the services. Well, you've got what Ben did in his excellent work, showing you that it's... 65, the eyes are gone. 83% for, 17% opposed. That's pretty demonstrable that there is a request. Now, I would like to just briefly explain what this service district will do. The private contractor will take the trash receptacle from the home, put it on the road, and then put it back. Okay? As it stands now, what happens is that the tenant may put it out or may not, or the cleaning service may put it out or may not, but it goes for days and perhaps longer sometimes before it gets... but it goes for days and perhaps longer sometimes before it gets put back. And while it's out there, there's trash up and down the street. What's in it for the property owners? Obviously, government should not do something like this unless it's going to have a benefit. Well, it will first, again, keeping in mind that the overwhelming majority of these properties are rental or investment, it will make the neighborhood more attractive, therefore, the property is much more apt to rent. Secondly, it will avoid, excuse me, if the property is more rentable, it is also more sellable, and the property values will rise. All right, well, what would be in it for the county? If the property rents more frequently because the neighborhood is more attractive, then there's going to be more occupancy tax. If the property rents regularly because it's more attractive, it's going to be more marketable for sale, and there would be more land transfer tax. And then the property values would just probably rise because it will become a very desirable neighborhood. I can put on a cast of thousands, I will not do that. I frequently sit on the other side of the table, so I'm sensitive to your time. But I have realtors here that will document what I said. I have property owners here that will do that as well. But I think I would, at this time, request if you have any questions of me or anything you specifically would like me to address.
Any questions from the board to Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One question. I noticed the 1.5 cents would raise $140,000.
It's .015.
Okay, well, that would raise $140,000, and the actual cost is about $75,000 for a year.
Yes, sir.
So, is, do you really need the?
Here's the reason I recommended that they do this. The .015 is a modest amount. Again, it only generates 105. But I see tonight you're having folks come back and ask for an increase in the service rate. It seemed to me that the better thing to do, since this is such a modest amount, would be to make sure there is a buffer in there as expenses increase, as the contractor may charge more in the future. And there's always expenses and surprises as you get into it. That it is better to have an abundance than not enough. It is of keen importance that this not costs the county a penny. Now, the statute says that you could, and this is loosely translated, you could lend money to the fund, or you could come up with funds to make it work from other revenue sources. But we don't think you would find that very palatable. And we don't want, and I don't have enough courage to come back here and ask you to do that. So, that's why it is what it is.
Thanks, sir. Any further questions?
I have a question for Mr. Scanlon.
Go ahead.
Make sure I understand. We're going to tax property owners, and we're going to hire the contractor, and we're going to pay the bill.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would you like any information additional to what I've given you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll give you some rebuttal time if you would like to use it.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, we have we have five people, I believe, that signed up to speak. First is Dan Lane. Ask you to come forward and give your name and address, sir.
My name is Dan Lane. I live at 1049 Corolla Drive in the Whalehead District. Thank you for taking the time to see us tonight and listen to us. I've been handed this sand disc stick if we have more photos. So if you're really ambivalent at some point about what you might see before, we've got more. In 2008, 2009, I was the Director of the Whalehead Property Owners Association, and my job was to get the rubbish off the streets. In 2009, I contracted and got a donation from Waste Management for a roll-off dumpster to be put in the, one of the parking lots there in Whalehead. To coordinate this, we put this dumpster there at the weekend of our annual meeting in October so people could get all the trash out, all the broken chairs, this nonsense, whatever. I also arranged for the Boy Scouts from Troop 116, from Kitty Hawk, to come up and work on an environmental merit badge by helping us pick stuff off the streets in return for a donation from the Property Owners Association. I worked with local pool companies, pool cleaning services, who had trucks who can come up and pull stuff up and pick things up and bring it to the dumpster. It was a wild success. We had one roll-up filled, we filled, virtually filled, a third of the parking lot. We had to go to Waste Management and get another roll-off. Waste Management estimated to me that we picked up two tons of trash. It's a lot of stuff. That's things that, you know, furniture, broken chairs, nonsense. Additionally, as we live there, we find that, you know, the tourists, it's great, you know, they support our way of life. I am a rental manager for a company, and I can tell you they support my way of life. But the fact is that they're not very tidy, they don't care, they're transient, they're not like we are. You know, then we have a pride in the neighborhood. And so they leave trash everywhere. And especially when they leave, and you all know, we live in an environment where a nor'easter will come out of nowhere. Occasionally, we have strong windstorms, and so the trash blows all over. We're now faced, in 2011, with a problem of wildlife, a wildlife problem. Feline rescue picked up 30, in the months of February, March, and April of this year, feline rescue picked up 37 cats, feral cats, walking around. Well, they're only hunting for food where they can find it, and where they find it is because the trash cans are blowing over, and they're left there. We've tried several initiatives in the Whalehead Property Owners Association to get membership to pick up, pull the trash cans back. We tried to hire people to do it, we tried to encourage them. We brought the property managers into the Currituck Club for an initiative which brought the property managers in to talk about them, and they refused to raise their rates and ask their owners to pay any more to push the cans back. It's not in their best interest to raise rates for their owners. As you well know, owners of rental property will go around and shop from year to year for the best rates. And if someone's going to say, "Well, we have a rollback rate," they're going to, whatever. We all know that in this environment, no one wants to raise taxes. We all know that. We also know that in this environment, getting a donation of two roll-offs from Waste Management is impossible, and it has been since the economy fell apart in 2010. We've tried what we could. I live on the corner of Corolla and Sturgeon. I worked from my street on Sturgeon all the way down to Benito Drive, pushing cans in after Thanksgiving, up and down the street. People came back, they were here for Christmas, cans were out, when they were empty, we pushed them back again. As you know, there's only 50 of us. We're not many, okay? But the property values have stunk, and they're sinking, not only because of the bad economy, but because there are realtors who will tell you Whalehead's a dump. There's trash everywhere. Take a ride through, take a look at our photos, please. Ben?
Please, take a look at some of these. And you'll know that we have an issue with trash. We have possums. We have a raccoon now. I haven't seen a raccoon in Whalehead, you know, in the, God, how many years I've been there? Feral cats, foxes, we have no natural predators. The only natural predator these things have are automobiles. We're standing there now, gentlemen and lady, where our properties are under-valued because of the economy. They're under-valued because the trash is everywhere. If it's location, location, we've got it. If it's curb appeal, we don't. And we come to you today and say, "Listen, please, hear us. There may be only 50 of us who reside here, but it is in our general welfare and best interest as a community to have these things pushed back." Every time there's a storm, you know, I wish there was a deputy here. Because every time I drive down Corolla Drive, or Whalehead Drive, on the way to my office in Monterey Shore after a storm, I stop a car and push a can back out of the road. And so I'm sure somebody else will tell you about their accidents with cars. But when I can't get to one, or they're blowing all over the place, I call the deputies. And I ask them to call, and I call a dispatcher and ask them to call a property manager and say, "There's obstruction here. We can't have speed bumps. Our fire trucks can't get around if there was a fire because these things are in the way. We need relief from you people. We can't do it ourselves." Frankly, as our attorney said, it's 65, I'm getting old, too. This is really getting old pushing these trash cans. I used to think of it as exercise. I'm getting tired of this kind of exercise. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jack Ringel.
Can I ask you a question in between?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scanlon, is this a once-a-week pickup?
In-season, it's twice a week, out-of-season, it's once a week.
I'm Jack Ringel, 839 Corolla Drive. Carol and I, my wife, owned in 20, for 20 years. We've been full-time residents for 12. We're also realtors. Perspective purchasers are often turned away from Whalehead because of its overall appearance and the effect that that will have on the potential of their investment in the community. Several issues contribute to this: flooding, roads, and trash. As you know, flooding, we're working on, roads are in the state system, and they're being worked on. Trash is what we're talking about tonight. Overflowing totes, attendant odor, unsanitary conditions lead to a very unkempt community. As Dan said, most Whalehead homes are held by non-residents, and they're in rental programs. We're not in the rental business, but judging from weekly rental rates of similar houses in other communities, we observe that rent for a Whalehead house is not at the same level as it might be in a similar house in another community. Resolving community appearance will help values, will most certainly help to increase rents, and the side benefit is that it will increase occupancy tax dollars for the county. Real estate taxes have suffered, excuse me, real estate values have suffered greatly throughout the area, but nowhere more so than in Whalehead. Whalehead has experienced a greater level of distressed property sales, the combination of short sales and foreclosures. In fact, over the past two years, Whalehead has had more than double the distressed sale transactions than the combined total in Pine Island, Buck Island, and Spindrift. It's apparent that the market's image in Whalehead has hurt sellers, current owners, and the county alike. Agents who know Whalehead know well the issues which are negative to the community. It is not unusual for a prospect to visit Whalehead and then request other communities. Values have tumbled, and even now continue a downward trend. Cleaner streets will improve the appearance of Whalehead. They'll help us to promote sales and increase values. The proposal for a tax service district to deal with trash has been created by owners and supported by most owners. It'd be a win for owners, tenants, and the county. Your support of this would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Sandy LaRue.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Sandy LaRue, and I reside at 835 Whalehead. I'm going to be short because Mr. Ringel and Mr. Lane, they've already said it all. I do want to just make my point that I believe that the Whalehead trash problem is not the responsibility of the property managers, nor the responsibility of the pool companies, or just a few homeowners. It's the responsibility of everyone and all of the residents of Whalehead. We need to keep it, our neighborhood beautiful, and we need to be able to make it a desirable vacation destination for people who want to visit us. The proposed cost of the service district is very reasonable, and certainly a better deal than at the other communities where they have a mandatory high association fee. Personally, I'm very capable to continue to roll back my trash containers, and those of my neighbors. But I will gladly, gladly pay 1.5 cents per $100 of tax assessed value to have Whalehead to be free of the unsanitary, trashy smells in the unsightly trash containers that laden our streets. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Terry Ruggles.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the time. I echo a lot of what you've just heard. Barry Nelmes built my house in 1983. Whatever you want to say about Barry, he's a heck of a builder and builds a good house. And we've lived there all that time, and why how things have changed. Forty houses on the beach when we built, just wild horses. And suddenly, we went on a development that was on steroids. And now we have 10-bedroom houses that are the norm rather than the exception. So, we have this problem, and we're drowning in our own success. And we have people coming in from Columbus and from Cleveland, or from Pittsburgh and from Dallas. And they come and they go because they're on tight time schedules. And you've heard the stories from Dan and from Jack about what's left on the street. There are some times you go down Lighthouse Drive and you think that, well, is that a brew-through? Or is that a brew-through? Or is that a brew-through? Because the beer cans and the packages just exceed even the number of cans that are put out. So, my wife and I have been here for 26 years, and we like it very much. And we spend five weeks a year here. And we like it because of what it was and the potential for what it can be. But as you've heard, we've hit a big bump in the road. So, I'm coming to you as a person who likes the Outer Banks and spends a lot of time here, but I'm also coming to you as a businessman. And quite frankly, I've known Jack for a long time, and we sit on a board together. And Jack, that's just pretty doggone depressing. I didn't know the facts were as harsh as they are. So I come to you as a homeowner, as a person who loves the county that you call home, but I also come to you as a businessperson. Because I, too, want to have those rentals because I've got a mortgage to pay. I'm more than happy that you get additional taxes from anybody that comes through. But I don't have any concerns about leaving anytime soon because I like it here, but I want to be able to afford it here, and that means that I'm going to have to have those people coming in to rent the house. So for the good of all of us who live in Whalehead, who like it as much as we do, because that's why we're here tonight, we would hope that you would see a way clear to side with the majority that seem to be in the blue here and think that this is the best thing to do for our particular corner of the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have George Mears. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is George Mears. I'm here to address the drainage subdivision side of this. As we know, we came to you in 2003 and asked to become a drainage subdivision, the first one out there. Whalehead's got about 800 properties. By this point, we were up to about 750 of them have been built on. A lot of those, as Terry just mentioned, the four-bedroom places have been replaced by eight- and 10-bedroom places. The roofs have increased. Last 100 lots, you know, these lots remain behind because they were low lots. They were too expensive to develop when they're $50,000 and $60,000 lots. But when they became $300,000 and $400,000 lots, people says, "We can do this." And the builders knew how to get around it. And it's not their fault, it's legal. They can go to a health department, which doesn't recognize anything other than a gravity septic system. So they raised the entire lot from what used to be three feet of depression storage, would hold tens of thousands of gallons of water, to a four-foot mound above the street, which just sheds all that. So we've done some of it to ourselves. But we've also got increasing developmental pressures coming in from the Corolla Bays and stuff next to us. We've done the modeling, we know that water flows from the northeast to the northwest to the southeast, in towards Whalehead. And we know Corolla Bay's got an almost acre-size, nine-and-a-half-foot stormwater pond that collects, you know, millions of gallons of water. The groundwater table's at about six feet, so that's a direct injection into the groundwater system, which is automatic and then it'll flow into Whalehead. So, we, right now, we're stalled at Phase Two. Phase Three will address Herring and another road and take drainage basins. We've got pumps at about six to eight feet. They go to a force main to take it up to, right now, we're using the Timbuktu Pond. But the next phase gets us into the Craw Light Pond. It's critical that we get access, it gives us some flexibility to system. We can take some water out of the system before the big storms come, and we can certainly bring down the water levels much, much less. I took over as chairman, I've been on this drainage board since it was started. I took over chairman in 2006, when the old chairman's house got so badly damaged that he took out two mortgages to fix it, elevate it several feet, and ultimately had to leave the area. He was no longer a resident, so he couldn't chair the board anymore. So I assumed it at that point. I gave it up a couple of years ago, but I'm still on it. And so we are asking for your help. Five cents will get us to where we need to be. We can step back, we can look at it, we can reevaluate the system and see what we need to do. But that'll take, a critical point is Herring right now, and we have to address that. And we don't have the money for it right now without your help. Thank you.
Mr. Mears, one question. From a homeowner's perspective, the stuff that we have done there thus far, does that seem to be helping and making an impact?
It is. The nuisance rains aren't a problem at all. The people seem to like it. It is. The nuisance rains aren't a problem at all. The people seem to like it. It looks better. You know, the asphalt was deteriorating anyway, so we took that up. The swell is not deep. It's not something that someone falls off. It looks good. Other people saying, "When's my turn?" So, we'll have additional phases. We're not going to be doing the Benito until the state steps up and says, "We're willing to help them out, but they want us to take on their tasks." And we're not going to do that. But we've got our own we have to deal with. So, you know, the first two have been pretty successful. The first phase, second is in a critical location. That will help. And a third will start getting into the middle part of the community.
Really start to see some dividends then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Ginger, I know you had come up and said that you wanted to, but I didn't see you get your name on here, so I'll give you the opportunity.
Didn't realize I didn't sign. Is it okay?
My name is Ginger Sykes and I have a house at 953 Carolla Drive in Whalehead. I think it is obvious that we have two problems and we're addressed, have already started addressing the drainage one. And I just would like to add one small suggestion to the solutions. My house has been flooded there ever since neighbors built cement driveways that covered a large portion of the land. And prior to that, and I've had the house for 15 years, I never had the first problem with flooding. And so, in conjunction with the drainage plan that you're putting in place and the service district, I would request that perhaps you take a look at the land that can be utilized by driveways and cement. Because I think if they worked hand-in-hand, the whole plan would be a little bit more successful. And then on the matter of trash, I spoke with my pool and spa man and offered to pay him to roll the trash cans back. And he scoffed at my idea of paying him and said he'd be glad to do it. And perhaps we need to keep in mind that even though the season there is approximately 20 weeks long, I know that some houses are not rented that much. I know mine, for example, right now is rented for six weeks. And so, I'm subsidizing three trash pickups a week that I could get done for free and have never, to my knowledge, had a problem with calling waste management and having something put at the curb by the pool or spa man right before the pickup, which usually is on Wednesday. I would question the need to increase to three trash pickups a week and also to have it be double, almost double, the actual cost of performing the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woody, there has been some discussion about non-porous, porous materials and that type of stuff. And what did we ever decide?
As part of the UDO rewrite that the county's currently working on, we're also creating a stormwater manual
Right.
through which we're going to try to address some of these individual lot flooding issues in the Outer Banks. So, I hope that in the coming months, the folks in Carolla will have the opportunity to join us at a public meeting and give us some input on that. So, we're trying to address these and that information will be out and available later this year.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir. I think we've made our presentation effectively. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Open floor for motion.
I'd like to make a motion we approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the district.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We will move along to item number four. Public hearing on the 2012 FY budget. Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to thank you for switching these twos around. It's in order to adopt the budget ordinance, you set your tax rate to the budget ordinance. So, depending on what you did with that item will dictate what you do with the budget ordinance. So, we presented this to you at your last commissioners' meeting. There have been no changes since the last meeting. You are required to have a public hearing before you take another advisement. Budget comes up and half the room leaves. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm, that's a good sign or a bad sign.
Maybe that's a good thing.
Can we go too?
We're going to find out.
How you can do it to them.
Mr. Chairman, as part of the statutory requirements before the board can adopt their annual operating budget, you are required to have a public hearing. Staff presented that budget to you at your last meeting. Since then, there have been no changes, although there will be a change from your last vote. We will need to amend the budget ordinance to increase the tax or the new tax that's being assessed for one and a half cent will be included. The other tax that was up there, the five cent is, has been included in the budget, so that is already part of the budget. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but those are the only changes that have been made.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I want to close the public hearing. There's a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay.
I'm trying to get your attention.
Okay.
I want to just remark a little bit on the state budget that was just approved over in Raleigh on Thursday when the Senate voted to override the governor's veto after the House had done it on Wednesday morning. Some might ask, why is the state budget important to the county budget? And it's very important. If we were sitting here back February the 1st, I'd tell you, I was very concerned that we'd be seeing a tax increase in Currituck County because of services that would be shifted down from the state to the county. And the Senate and House leadership at that time said they would not shift any services down to counties. They would not balance the state budget on the backs of counties. And that is exactly the case. And to give you a little bit of detail on it and why I was so concerned, in the governor's proposed budget, she had asked that workers' compensation caused at the school system, which our state employees be paid for by counties, that any tort claims that might come against the school system be paid by the counties, and that all school bus replacements would be paid for by counties. And that's not the case. The budget keeps all those things under state control and state effort, and that was very important to us. Another thing that was a big concern was teachers. They added 1,124 new teachers around the state in the state budget. So, they fully funded all the teaching positions that were there and added some more. Their intent is to lower classroom size in terms of student-to-teacher ratio to 1 to 18 this year, one teacher to 17 students next year. And the final intent is to get to a student-teacher ratio of 1 to 15 when funding permits. So, that was very important. So, from that standpoint, we did very well, the counties did, in North Carolina. And it's a far different picture here tonight, as I said, than what I thought it would be February 1st as we adopt our budget. And we had made a pledge that we were not going to raise taxes in this downtime, bad economy, because that'd be the worst thing that we could do to the citizens that live in Currituck County. And I'm glad we're in that position like where we don't do that. And I'd like to commend our county manager, Mr. Scanlon, and Mrs. Hill, our finance director for all their work, and department heads like Mr. Woody and Mr. Weatherly back there, the county engineer, who have worked to provide services that we need to provide to our citizens. And they've done it in a productive and efficient manner. And I want to say thank you from me. And I assume I can speak for the rest of the board on that.
I'll echo those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comment?
I was just going to comment and concur with what, oh, Mr. Etheridge said.
Okay. Hearing none.
Let me add two more quick things. From a personal standpoint from Currituck County, we fared very well also because House Bill 284, which is now Senate session law, 211, 21114, I believe it is, which is titled Wayne County Design Bill, was passed and ratified. And that allows us to do the COA project as a design bill, which we feel like will save considerable dollars long-term to the county in doing that way. That's how we're doing the community center, the YMCA, and we feel like that's saving us millions of dollars in doing it that way. The other thing, the Mid-County Bridge gap funding was maintained in this budget. And the Knott's Island Ferry remains a toll-free ferry for the schoolchildren, the citizens of Knott's Island, to come over to the mainland and vice versa, us to go to Knott's Island. So, we fared fairly well in the General Assembly Budget Session also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the budget?
I make a motion we approve the budget for 2012.
I second that motion.
With the amendment, is necessary.
Right.
With the amendments, that's necessary.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Budget has been adopted. Mr. Scanlon?
Thank you.
Item number five, recommendation of award for construction management at-risk contract for Moayak wastewater. Mr. Scanlon?
This is a project that we've been working on some time. We're actually taking a slightly different approach. In fact, it's probably the first time Currituck County has actually approached the project in this fashion. But the general statutes does allow us to move forward with the construction project under the construction manager-at-risk project. Under that kind of a scenario, the county government would hire a construction manager-at-risk who would work closely with our design team while the project is being designed. And when they get to a point where they're comfortable with their knowledge of the industry, their knowledge of the trades, they will offer us a fixed price to do that project. And hence the word at-risk and the idea, the applicant at that time or the construction manager-at-risk would assume any risk if that project was to exceed that amount. The idea being is basically you're bringing value engineering to the front end of the design process versus the back end when you've already designed it. We went out with an RFQ, request for qualifications, for people or industries or companies that would be interested in serving as a construction manager-at-risk for this project. We had six responses. Of that, we selected three for interviews and we interviewed those three teams. And tonight is a staff's recommendation that we move forward with contracting with George Raperinson as the construction manager-at-risk for the Moayak wastewater system. And we also are looking, we have to put it together, our design team, and we're making a recommendation to move forward with Joe Anloff Engineering to do the design for that project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is this part of the budget constraints that we've talked about?
It is, but we will be bringing back to you an actual construction project, a financing package for it, once the design and the number is known.
Okay. Any further comments? Questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Item number six, appointment to the game board. Mrs. Gilbert.
I'd like to point Willie Austin from Moayak to the game commission.
Okay.
Second with him, and he's come with high recommendations, so.
We have a motion for Willie Austin from Moayak. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Consent agenda. Any questions about the consent?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number eight is commissioner's report. Mr. Martin, we'll start with you tonight.
I'd only like to comment to the people of the county. Sandra Hill, who is over our finance department, was recognized by the federal government with the highest award given to the fiscal control. She's sitting here now. And I'd just like to say to Ms. Hill that we certainly appreciate you and congratulations on running such a fine department.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Etheridge?
I've said enough.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Gilbert. I just want to offer out, on June 9th, I happened to come across a fire that was going on in the Moayak area. It was a field fire and a vehicle fire. And I just want to commend the fire and EMS that were present on site. Chief Roscoe, I was able to be there and see him set up a command. So, it was a good experience for me as a commissioner. And also want to just commend our fire and EMS that were in attendance and they did a superb job. And I was impressed with what they were doing. So, thank you very much to the fire and EMS.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert. Mr. Petrie?
Along with what Commissioner Etheridge had said about the budget passing with the Knott's Island Ferry and the Mid-Currituck County Bridge, I'd like to send out a big thank you to our representative, Bill Owens, who led the charge, crossed party lines, and looked out for Currituck County. So, my hat's off to Representative Owens. Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
I just had a couple of things I'd like to remind people of. One, Wednesday, our newest business in the south end of the county, Ace Hardware, is going to have a grand opening. Hope some of you can turn out and go see that. It's going to be, it's a beautiful store. I have to get a permission slip to go down there. My wife won't let me go by myself. But it really is fun. You guys, if you really don't have any place to go, that's someplace to go and have a great time. But they have food. BJ's going to be catering it, so it's going to be a real nice affair. So, please come if you can and welcome them. The other thing I'm pleased to announce, that September the 17th, we've reserved the date, Town Bank of Currituck is going to sponsor a Family Fun Day in conjunction with Currituck Kids, which is a local charitable organization, part of the community foundation. And it's going to be open to kids all over the county. It's going to be down at the Rural Center. There'll be a lot of events going on. So, mark your calendars and be sure you turn out for that because it's going to be a lot of fun, a lot of fun things to see. Going to have kids ID program there. I think everybody will enjoy it. And if you haven't been down to see the Rural Center, it's a good opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. I have a couple, three little comments here. Mr. Scanlon, you and I talked a little earlier today about the Smart Start program and some of the comments that were being made about the Knott's Island program may go away. I know Mr. Etheridge and I have talked some. I would like for you to dig a little deeper into that. And if that turns out to be the case, I'd like to have a letter resolution opposing that put together for our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Etheridge, I'll let you, I'll ask you to elaborate a little bit on what you were telling me today, if you would, for the people that own.
Representative Owens was able to add a provision in the bill that funded Smart Start that counties under $35,000 in population could receive no more than a 20% cut on Smart Start funding. So, that should be able to keep the Knott's Island situation viable.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I suppose so.
The other thing, Mr. Petrie hit it on the head. Representative Owens, I would like for us to prepare letters of appreciation, not only to him, but to Senator White and our, the leadership of the House and Senate for doing what they had promised they would do. I know we had numerous meetings with them and they kept telling us, as Mr. Etheridge said, that they certainly were not going to balance the budget on the backs of counties. It seems as though to me they'd done their job and done that well. And I would like for something to be prepared to send to them. Third thing, I apologize, Mr. Woody. Holly also got a pretty prestigious award. I had it on my table to bring with me. I will ask you, if you would, to let folks know what that's about. I walked off and forgot it. I'm sorry.
Holly White, who's a senior planner with the county and works in my department, she was awarded as the floodplain administrator of the year for the state of North Carolina. So, what that means is that in all the state of North Carolina and all the floodplain administrators, she was recognized as one of, as the best for this year and certainly one of the best in the state. She shows a lot of leadership in that field and reflects highly on the county.
I would like to extend my congratulations and the board's congratulations to her as well. That being said, managers report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I would like to now call the Tourism Development Authority meeting to order.
Mr. Chairman, you've got two items in front of you tonight for your approval as the TDA. The first one is the expenditure of the OCT tax. Again, we presented this at your last public hearing. There's been no changes since that was presented to you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Scanlon?
It does require a public hearing.
It does, yes. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Budget amendment, Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, this was a budget amendment that we should have gotten to last time, that we're carrying forward.[1738.21]